Call special meeting for the Corporation of the Town of Cobalt on March 26, 2024 to order at 6:00 PM. Disclosure of community interest in general nature thereof? None? Three, adoption of meeting agenda, draft motion be resolved, the council approve the agenda of the special meeting dated March 26, 2024 as presented. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Cooper, Counselor Anderson? Four, oh, sorry, all in favor? Four, business, 4.1, Ministry of Municipal Affairs, Counselor FIR Training. And we have Brian and I'm sorry, Sarah, here to do that training. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us today. Really appreciate that everyone's taking the time to, to come to this session. And I guess without further ado, I'll turn the floor over to my colleague Brian Sorel. He's the Senior Municipal Advisor for our office at the Municipal Service Office North at Sudbury. Again, my name is Sarah Parme. I'm the Municipal Advisor for the area of Tiskin South, including Cobalt. So we're happy to bring the information to you today around the Financial Information Return, or the FIR, and the Financial Indicator Threshold, or the FITS, that we prepare based on your submitted FIR data. To give you a bit of a snapshot overview of some of the information as it relates to Cobalt. So thank you, Brian, for being here and for tea.
Thank you, Sarah. So just to be clear, want to make sure council has a copy of the presentation deck as it appears on the screen. And may also have a copy of a document that looks like this. The Financial Indicators for the Municipality and a document which looks, I think yours copies a little larger than mine, but like that. Called Municipal Financial Profile. Is that correct? Okay, because I will be referencing those as we go through the presentation. If I go to the next slide, please. So just a quick disclaimer, municipalities, you are responsible for making all decisions, including compliance with applicable statutes or regulation. This presentation is for information only and is not a substitute for legal, financial audit, or other professional advice in connection with any particular matter, and is generally highly summarized. So key details may be missing, and you should seek appropriate advice where needed. So moving to the outline. What we're going to cover tonight is background on financial reporting and the financial information return and council roles in that regard. As well as then we're going to look at the Financial Indicators, which sets up Cobalt's position relative to the provincially set thresholds and to its peer group, which are communities in Northern Ontario between 2,500 and up to 2,500, 1,000 to 2,500 population. And then we'll have time for some questions. Generally, if council has questions, I'm content that you ask them at the time the question arises. So we don't lose the context of the question. If you wish to ask questions. I'm, I'm fine with that if Madam Mayor is, accepts that as well.
I'll allow you to control the questions.
Thank you. Your worship. So moving on to the next slide, fiscal context. So as municipal council, you're tasked with governance and the oversight of the financial wellbeing of municipality. And that is to ensure that it is transparent, accountable, and responsible to the ratepayers. Fundamentals of effective fiscal management include careful long-term planning, financing policies that meet the needs of today and tomorrow, program and service delivery reviews, regular financial reporting to council, proper financial controls and risk management, and accountability to the ratepayers and other government, other levels of government. Next slide, please. So budgeting. Budgets help to define the levels of municipal services and identify how revenues will be used on expenses. The process involves prioritizing projects, programs, and service levels within limited finance, financial resources to meet community expectations. Your municipality is required to prepare and adopt an annual budget that includes estimates of all amounts required during the year. Municipality is required to prepare a balanced budget each year in accordance with the budget rules and legislation, and to provide for the deficit of the prior year, or treat any surplus in the prior year as revenue. Your budget should reflect the directions of your strategic plan. Planning stage should consider that plan as well as the services and delivery levels required. Municipality's needs, current challenges, and what it hopes to accomplish for several years ahead. Most municipalities have a budget committee to coordinate this budgeting process. The budget committee may include all or part of council and senior staff. There is also a component of public engagement in the process. Once a budget is approved, council has a controllership role to ensure regular reporting that actual expenditures and revenues conform to the budget. Significant variances may need to be addressed and of course, action of fair and approved to get back on track. On a side note, just to bear in mind, a budget is a guess. It is a knowledgeable guess, but it is a guess of what you're going to spend in the next year. So it needed, and it should be passed preferably as early in the year as possible, if not in December of the prior year. And I know a lot of you will say, who does that? Another community of roughly your size, Central Manitouland, has for every year for the last number of years passed their budget in December. So it is not impossible to do. It is something you can look at. A budget is not a report on what you have done. It's a, it's a guess as to what you anticipate to do. It is an educated guess, but it is a guess. So please think about doing that as early in the year as possible. Because it allows your staff to have direction. It allows you to think about and plan for expenses in, in as early as possible. Next slide. So not all, not all municipalities have the same timeframe for the budget process. Some may start their planning process very early on, while some, while some may not start late until later into the year or the budget year itself. Generally, the steps usually taken include establishing a timetable, initiating a budget plan, including gathering supporting data and guidelines, evaluating and reviewing draft estimates, compiling an overall budget document, approval of the budget, and levying bylaws, budget implementation, and budgetary control. You should expect to see a timetable laid out in terms of your process that will describe various stages of development, what you can expect from staff and when, and eventually what you might expect to see in terms of a levy change. Budget deliberate, deliberation, liberation can become intense, but is a critical and powerful tool which your municipality will be relying on for the next year. And you want to ensure that it reflects your municipality's needs and expectations. Take the time to understand what the various components of the budget may mean relative to the services and programs delivered. This may be an opportune time to see what your neighbors are doing in terms of how services are delivered. How are they doing it more, are they doing more effectively or efficiently than you are? Or are you doing better than they are in terms of the economy of your services? You have to remember that you are ultimately accountable to your ratepayers for the decisions that you make. Next slide, please. Many municipalities prepare their budgets in two parts, operating budgets and capital budgets. Operating budgets are normally used to plan for municipalities' day-to-day expenditures, such as salaries, wages, benefits, heat, hydro, maintenance of buildings, and infrastructure. As an operations guide, you may receive a municipal organization chart as well as year-over-year comparative data. As a financial plan, it acts as a guide that projects revenues and expenditures for the year, which assists with monitoring and evaluation. As a policy development, it may include a statement of budgetary policy in the form of goals, objectives, and strategies. As a communications tool, the budget can help inform the media and the public. The capital budget is where you will see your municipality's infrastructure needs, maintenance, replacement, or renewal. It will also identify the manner in which your municipality expects to fund capital works, such as debt, reserves, grants, or other, other revenue sources. Note that there is a critical link between your municipality's capital budget and asset management plan, which we're going to speak to shortly. Next slide, please. Financial reporting to the public. So for municipalities, financial reporting to the public is predominantly done through audited financial statements and financial information returns in addition, of course, to financial reporting by staff to council at open council meetings. With respect to audited financial statements, municipalities must appoint an auditor for a term not exceeding five years. The auditor's role includes annually auditing accounts and transactions of the municipality and its local boards, as well as expressing an opinion on their financial statements based on the audit. Municipality's treasurer is required to publish the municipality's audited financial statements for the previous year within 60 days of receiving them. The financial statements provide information about the status of the municipality's finances, including its assets, generally what a municipality owns and controls, liability, generally what the municipality owes, its accumulated surplus or deficit, its tangible capital assets, commitments as disclosed in the notes, how activities were financed, and how cash requirements were met. Of course, it does this in a highly summarized fashion. Once the audited financial statements are completed, a financial information return can be prepared. Financial information return is the main data tool, data collection tool used by the Government of Ontario to collect financial and statistical information from municipalities on an annual basis. All municipalities are required to submit their financial information return to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing by May 31 of each year. If your municipality does not meet the required, the reporting deadlines, it may not be able to access provincial funding programs, such as the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund or the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. The FIR is a wealth of information about the municipality and is used in a number of ways by our ministry and others. Next slide, please. Well, one slide ahead. Sorry. No, we're okay, yeah. So the FIR is used provincially to calculate grant amounts such as the OPF, develop policy, monitor the financial status of municipalities. For example, when we complete the financial information, financial indicator threshold analysis, prepare the annual repayment limit, and generate financial and statistical data. The Financial Information Return can also be used by you to prepare year-over-year comparisons, look at trend analysis or forecasting, compare data with other municipalities on key indicators, for example, debt and reserve levels, support land use planning, strategic planning, and asset management planning. Now the next slide, the, yes. So the information contained in the FIR is a decision-making tool for council. As mentioned, you can use it for year-over-year comparison, trend analysis, forecasting. For example, during budget deliberations, there may be a concern as the impact of decisions on individual ratepayer. Data from the Financial Information Return can be extracted for other municipalities in order to get a sense of relative taxation level. This is one of the many practical database assessments that we are taking. Data from the 2021, 2000 to 2021, actually to 2022, is stored online for all municipalities in Ontario and is available through the website noted on the slide. You can view the data by municipality, by schedule, or by multi-year. And as indicated on the slide at the top, you can see that it does reports and dashboards. So you can pull down a number of various, of various reports and that may assist you in understanding the database analysis of the Financial Information Return. So when you look at that, you can look not only at your peer group, which we compare to, which is Northern municipalities having a population between 1,000 and 2,500. You can choose any municipality in Ontario to look at their information, any date from 2000 through 2021. Next slide, please. When you delve into the FIR, there is an opportunity to engage in discussions on the basis of the data and in comparison to your, like, neighbors. Counselor encouraged to use these and other questions provided in the appendix to guide, to engage in discussions with their staff. This discussion will help council to under, better understand why the results are what, the way they are, and to brainstorm about what policies or best practices can be put in place. So looking at that, you can look at how your tax levels compare to other similar municipalities. What factors you could consider with setting your tax rates? How does your council communicate tax rate or budget changes to other taxpayers? Does the municipality have policies or practices in place to address pressures from outstanding assessment appeals? Other questions which you can consider could be, for example, looking at my peer group, what kind of infrastructure do they have? Do they have to go on to replace, refresh, or renew compared to what I have? And how are they funding those same actions? Move to the next slide, please. Is the level of tax revenue municipality increasing or decreasing? What factors in the community have affected the level of taxes? How does it compare to others? What is your long debt, debt level compared to other municipalities? Are debt servicing costs increasing or decreasing? And is your level of long-term debt sustainable and consistent with your debt management policy? Next slide, please. So one of the things that the ministry does every year is generate financial indicators for each municipality in Ontario. There are seven indicators that the municipality, that the ministry populates and uses when conducting its annual review. Each indicator has a level of challenge, low, moderate, or high, assigned to it based on where it falls within certain statistical ranges. The financial analysis is used to identify emerging trends regionally and across the province. The Financial Indicator Threshold results are provided for information purposes only. They provide a snapshot of certain financial indicators based on the financial information returns submitted to the, submitted to the ministry by municipalities at a specific point in time. They should not be looked at in isolation, and there are not a substitute for financial or other professional advice in connection with any particular matter. So if you want to take out the Financial Indicator Review, we'll be looking at this in conjunction with the slides as we go along from this point. So next slide, please. At the top of the Financial Indicator Review, you will see the statistical information. And that is the macroeconomic information, including households, the population, median household income, home purpose taxation, average change in assessment, taxable residential assessment, as I said, total taxable assessment, and the municipal fiscal circumstance index, which is a key factor in determining your Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund allocations. The calculation of your municipal financial circumstances index is set out in the notice of, in the notice of assessment and the OMPF workbook, which was sent to your treasurer earlier this year. Moving to the next slide, please. So indicators, the seven indicators are tax arrears, net financial assets or net debt, reserve funds, ratio, debt servicing, asset consumption radio, ratio, and annual surplus or deficit. Moving to the first indicator, which next slide, tax arrears. So this is actually total taxes receivable, less any allowance you've made for collectible as a percent of the total taxes linked. So this is essentially the percentage of taxes that you have billed for municipal purposes and have not received. So in terms of Cobalt's own actual performance on these measures, when you look at the indicator, you will see that in 2022, you had 54.5, 55.4% of the total, total taxes levied were not received. That includes arrears from previous years and in the current year. You'll see that that has been a trend which had been increasing since 2018, when it was 26.3%. This is concerning because if you look at the comparator to your north, the median amount of taxes receivable is 9.2%, and the average is 10.7%. So you're roughly 45% greater level of arrears than your peer group. One of the issues with respect to that, of course, means that your tax, your base tax rates need to be higher to account effectively for the revenue that you have not received. Because you have to carry that part of the deficit that reflects revenues not received forward into the next year. Okay? So if you had collected those, essentially, you would not have to charge for that deficit that you would be carrying forward that is reflected in not recovering. Creates a pressure for an increased level of taxes. It also creates potential cash flow for the, cash flow issues for the municipality. Because of course, your taxes aren't coming in as they are expected or budgeted to come in. And may ultimately, depending on what happens in the tax collection efforts, may result in those being written off. I do understand from your financial staff, your CEO and your treasurer, that there have been efforts within the current year to move three ma, three major properties to tax sales, which should account for something on the order of two-thirds of that 29%, sorry, 29% of the arrears. So that should reduce your arrears back down to somewhere around 26%, which was back in 2018. But that still is a, you know, pretty significant amount. Yes, Counselors?
Houston.
Houston.
Sorry. Without doing the math, what is a dollar by that 29 or whatever percent? Any idea off the top of your head?
The amount that's reported at 20, for 2022 was 395,000 in arrears. For 2021 was $320,000, and for 2020 was 231,000.
Thank you. Do I have a copy of those numbers? Is that on this bottom here?
No, that would be in your FIR, in the Financial Information Returns for those years, and you can look it up on the FIR website. Just to be clear, if you wanted to go to the FIR website, I know there was a link for the website in the presentation. But it is also very simple, if you look for Financial Information Return Ontario, and it brings you right to that website, so you don't have to worry about trying to find the actual link off the slide down. Okay?
What's that address again? The Financial Information.
You just Google Financial Information Return Ontario, just put it into a search engine. It should be the first site that pops up.
And if anyone has any trouble navigating that site, please call myself or Sarah. And we can certainly help you through navigating that site and finding the various reports or downloading financial information returns from your own municipality or indeed any municipality in Ontario between 2000 and 2021 if they filed their financial information return. Moving to the next indicator, net debt. So net financial assets or net debt as a percentage of home purpose taxation, user fees, and service charges, next indicator. Essentially, this indicator shows how much tax and fee revenue servicing, servicing debt. It may be used to look at the impact that past obligations and commitments may have on your own purpose taxation, user fees, those revenues that the municipality has control over. If this percentage is increasing, moving from a low positive or negative to a, to a higher positive, it may be an indicator that municipal debt is becoming less of a pressure. Conversely, if it is decreasing, that is moving further into the negatives, it may be an indicator that the municipal debt is increasing at a rate that may pose sustainability challenges in the future and may result in the municipality having to reduce program spending, increase taxes and fees, or take on additional borrowing to deal with that increasing debt. So if we look again at the financial indicator, you'll see that you are at minus 16%, which is still within the low-risk threshold. But it has been a negative trend since 2019, where you were at 3.9, a lot of 39.9%. And then you moved to 15.3%, so it came down a half. Then you moved into the negatives at 11. So this trend may pose sustainability issues in the future. And just to give you an example, if you wanted to know the numbers, in 2020, you were $254,000 to the good or net financial, positive net financial assets under that indicator. In 2020, sorry, 2019, you were 510,000. But in 2021, you had dropped to negative 208,000. So you owed 208,000 more than your assets were available. And in 2022, you were negative 354,000. That all likely pro, likely has to do with the impacts of recent inflationary changes and the cost of borrowing as it, as it has impacted your municipality. But that means that there, that you have to deal with something with respect to that, or eventually you're going to run sustainability issue. So now we come to the next indicator, which I think honestly, to some extent, is the elephant in the room. Indicator here is reserve funds as a percentage of your operating expenses, every operating expenses is the indicator. Reserves are money set aside for future needs, for example, capital projects to smooth costs, such as winter road maintenance reserves, or for unexpected costs, such as a contingency or emergency reserve. A high level of challenge, reserves of less than 10%, indicates the municipality may have limited flexibility to offset revenue, unexpected revenue losses or increases in expenses. A low level of challenge, reserves greater than 20%, would indicate that you're setting aside money for future needs. Reserves can be discretionary or mandatory as required by legislation. A long-term financial plan may indicate a preferred level of reserve to meet future needs. It may not be that these risk levels are general indications. Individual municipalities, particularly smaller municipalities such as yourself, with a significant infrastructure, water treatment, wastewater distribution systems, or wastewater treatment systems, may wish to maintain higher levels to maintain flexibility needed to respond to any issues which may arise. Okay? Example I want to give you here is a few years ago, Kirkland Lake had the roof of its sewage treatment plant collapse due to snow load. There was nothing wrong with the plant. It just had a snow load issue on the roof and it collapsed. Right? They had lots of reserves and then they had low debt. They blew through their entire credit line. They blew through all of their reserves in the time to, to deal with continuing to be able to provide services to their community while they waited on insurance money and provincial disaster assistance to come through. They were eventually made whole, but during the 18 months or so that that incident was active, between the time they started their insurance claims and disaster mitigation assistance claims and got the money, they still did provide services. People continued to flush their toilets. People continued to use their washing machines. Right? If you were in that situation, you would be facing environmental orders because you don't have the money to do that. You got, you, your reserves are at 0.7%. Your reserves at the end of 2022 are $28,000. You can't even buy a pickup truck with those reserves. Okay? So if you had something major disaster happen to your water treatment plant, or happened to your water, your or happened to your water, your wastewater treatment plant, your fire engine, something happened to your fire engine, what do you do to provide services for twenty eight thousand dollars to your residents and ratepayers? Right? And the trend has been since uh twenty twenty that you're clearly funding deficits out of reserves to keep taxes frankly artificially low. If I look at your, if you look at your uh long thing, the uh municipal financial profile, if you look at the second, at the top of the second page, uh, you will see it talks about tax effort at the bottom of the uh first set of five lines.
What, what page, sir?
Second page. Right? Uh, two of twelve. You'll see this says number of residential household, average households by average, for our average property households, property taxes for the average household. You'll see that the average for the northern population between one thousand and twenty five hundred is taxes of a thousand and thirty one dollars per house. You're at five hundred and twenty eight dollars. And that's why your reserves are where they are. Your.
I wish I only paid five hundred and eighty.
That's the average, you may have a better than average. Your percentage of the, if you look at the uh tax effort, which is the percent of the taxes of, of property taxes as a percent of the average income, you're two point five percent and the north population's at three point six percent. Yes?
Clearly, this is not including the O P P and the water, I guess, right?
It does not include service charges, this is, this is, we're talking property taxes.
Property taxes.
So, I mean, I'm just saying, so, so in that, in that context, compared to your peer group, uh, you've been using reserves to keep your taxes low, not talking service fees, taxes uh relatively or significantly lower than your peer group. And that, that stands the risk of costing you should something happen to any of your major infrastructure and you need to continue to provide services. Because as I say, twenty eight thousand dollars is you and I, well, it's not over a farm buying things, buying services today. I'll come back to talking about service fees towards the end of the, the talk, that's just on reserve funds there. Cash ratio, so cash ratio, it looks at cash and cash equivalents, or as to say, investments that you can, you can collapse in under thirty days as a percent of your current liabilities. It's a measure of the money that you can access quickly, cash on hand or short-term investments. And it looks at, it looks at the ability that municipality reads current obligations with its current resources on hand. And it is again, it's a time, it's a, it's a point in time measure. At the point of your audited financial statement year end, this is the cash you had on hand then, or could, or could get within thirty days to reflect that. So again, you're a hundred and fifty, not four point nine percent against a low risk threshold of fifty percent. You have consistently uh been uh above the fifty percent threshold. Uh, again, though, you will see that if you look at that indicator, uh because of the purchasing value of money, uh, your uh peer group runs again at, you know, you can see between five hundred and six hundred percent um of their uh current liabilities as cash on hand. Um, and again, that, that simply is a function because of the val- of the value of money, right? I mean, the, your um. I didn't get the number for that exactly, but it reflects the the fact that a smaller municipality needs to have a higher percentage of its current liabilities to have a purchasing power, right? Like we look at your reserve levels, you know, uh Sudbury's reserves at seven percent, uh, that's point seven percent would be still hundreds of thousands of dollars because its budget is so big, right? So it's the same thing with cash and cash ratio, right? It's, it's relative to your size of community, you need to have a higher value than the thresholds show because the purchasing value of money would not be there otherwise. Debt servicing as a cost of total revenues. Uh, so again, uh, this is simply a measure of how much of each dollar raised is spent paying down existing debt, principal and interest. Shows the extent of which past borrowing decisions may impact the mi- current municipal budget. Uh, so the more that a municipal's current revenues to pay for past borrowing, the less obviously is available for current spending. You're doing quite well on that indicator, you're two point two percent. Basically, right in line, you'll see your peer group is at one point nine percent, you're right in line with your peer group. Uh, and that, and that's excellent, that means that you at least have flexibility in the context of borrowing ability, should something happen uh or should you need to uh deal with the refurbishment, replacement uh or maintenance of existing assets. Closing amortization balance or asset consumption as it is indicated on the next slide. Uh, this is a very rough measure of the proportion of municipal's physical assets that have passed their identified useful life. So it approximates the amount of your physical ass- assets that are theoretically no longer capable of providing the level of service which the asset was intended. It measures the extent to which depreciable assets have been consumed by comparing written down value to their historical cost. An increasing value for this indicator could indicate a greater need for investment in capital repairs or replacement. So effectively, if we look at this, at this risk indicator, uh, if you're right at exactly fifty percent, it means that you're halfway through the, the identified life cycle of your assets. So that means that, you know, as your window fails, you buy a new one. Right, but it's right at that point, okay? There's no aspect of betterment in that. You're, you're buying it at exactly the point it fails. So generally, it's preferred that your, your level is less than fifty percent so that you are keeping ahead of the failure rate. You're not, you're not replacing it as it fails, if you, if you follow me? Uh, so right now, you're at fifty point seven percent, so you're pretty much right on. I mean, you look at your peer group, fifty one point two percent, you're pretty right in there with your peer group. So not a significant concern. Uh, there has been a slight increase over time, uh, but then, uh, but then, uh, there uh the increase is all, has uh been uh only, uh, less than four percent over uh five years. So you just want to keep an eye on that, but you are performing within your peer group range. Uh, so you're right at that fifty percent mark, again, it doesn't leave you much room for error, as I think that you may have found water main breaks in recent years where you're right at that point, you're fixing it just to break, right? Instead of having any leeway in the asset, um, you know, uh, you're fifty percent, it's like, my car just broke down, so I'll buy a new car. Instead of, I'm, I've got my car, I'm going to trade in, get some benefit for what I have, and buy a new car, you know? So you, I'm not suggesting that you need to replace your assets, say like every three years with a car or something. Uh, but, but certainly, uh, giving yourself a little bit more lead time on that would reduce maintenance costs uh of the assets within a year, uh, because your assets would be newer. But as I say, that's, that, that balancing between being right at the point of breakage or uh, a little bit of lead time, the amount of lead time you're comfortable with in your community is a local decision for council.
That's easier with the surplus.
Well, that, that's true. Coming to the last indicator then, sir, asset surplus or debt. So again, uh, with the exception of twenty nineteen, when I believe you were holding funds over uh with respect to a, an infrastructure project which was not completed, uh, you've had a uh deficit in every year. Um, so what we have is, if I look at the last three years, in twenty, in ni- in twenty twenty, you had a deficit of three hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. And twenty twenty one, you had a deficit of four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And in twenty twenty two, it was a deficit of ninety three thousand dollars. And we can see that sort of carried through in the gradual decline of reserves. Uh, so generally speaking, that, that uh means for the most part, one of two things, you're either experiencing unplanned pressures on services or liabilities, and I understand in twenty twenty one particularly, that was related to water main breaks uh that occurred in nineteen.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty two, okay.
And twenty.
But it can also be a function that, of failing to budget appropriately, which comes back to again, tax effort and then where you are with respect to that. And looking at uh the other one that I wanted to mention on the first page, uh, if we look at direct water billings as a percentage of gross water expenditures, uh, if you look at, uh, it's the it's the second line, if you see the, the large dark line discounted weighted assessment, it is two lines above that.
Yeah, on the municipal financial profiles.
On the first, on the first page.
Water billings, percent, okay, gross water expenditures?
Yes. You'll see that in twenty twenty and before that, you were recovering virtually all of your water billing costs from direct billing to, to water users. Since twenty twenty, your water billing has not kept up with your water billing costs. So as a result, in twenty twenty two, fifty, fifty point six percent of the cost of your water treatment facilities and water distribution facilities fell into the general tax rule. So that's another factor that changed, that reduction from twenty twenty to twenty twenty two in the water billing capturing the water costs is another function of why you're experiencing, experiencing a deficit, right?
Steve a question?
Uh, you have to ask the mayor about it.
Ask Steve the question, you're welcome.
Are you going to be putting him on hot?
No, I just, just, when did we roll the water into the taxes? It was right around the same time as that?
Around that time, from twenty two.
So that kind of goes with not collecting, getting the taxes from property taxes.
Still a little with that, that's why we changed last year with the, the tax increase.
What about?
But that could be a lot of outstanding water not getting paid on our tax.
And people didn't pay their tax bills before, they weren't paying their water bills before, even when they were suffering.
Okay, okay.
So this, obviously, in terms of the uh deficit and so forth, does not track leasing costs as a separate charge within your tax bill. It only looks at the um separated charges that the province tracks for all municipalities. Uh, so that would be water and wastewater charges and uh municipal property taxation. Uh, the lease charging would fall within general user fees because they don't have a separate user fee line or act within the F I R, uh, within the municipal financial profiles. Um, so I would encourage you to think about uh, considering that in the overall context of the services you wish to continue provide to the municipality. And I understand you are going through an asset management process to review your asset management um, the status of your asset, of your assets, uh, to comply with the asset management regulation. And additionally, uh, I know that you will be going through the, and the asset retirement obligation uh that to uh review that the public sector accounting board is requiring. Uh, so that you will have to report that within your financial statements this year. Uh, I hope you're well underway with that process. I've heard some, some municipalities are expecting delays from getting experts, uh, but I hope that you're well underway with that process. Uh, so anyway, as, when you're going through your asset management uh policy review, I would strongly encourage you to consider uh looking at a financing policy and looking at making a uh dedicated contribution to reserves in each year to deal with the potential of something happening with your reserve, with your assets, excuse me, as the age and you need to continue, where you can need to continue to provide services uh to the public. So, you know, I'm not so worried obviously about, say, a park or something which you can deal with uh, and is not an immediate service that people immediately need, you know, it's a recreational service. But uh, you know, you have to think about water and wastewater and fire, which are essentials of life for people, right? And you want to make sure that you're able to continue providing those services should something drastic or unforeseen happen to those, to some aspect of being able to deliver those services. So uh, I think that that's, as we say up there, questions, I uh if there's any other questions or anyone wants to have a discussion about anything with respect to that, I'm happy to. Go, yes.
Does this come with a bunch of solutions too?
Well, I, I mean, I, 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 I think that one solution that I recognize uh, that it is not the palatable solution, but I, I come back to the fact that uh the uh tax effort is two point three percent, uh, sorry, two point five percent compared to your peer group at three point six percent. Uh, so that it suggests that there is some room uh to increase taxes to deal with this. I'm not suggesting a massive increase in taxes, but a staged increase of taxes uh has not been done for uh a number of years, and I know that you did increase taxes last year.
Twelve percent.
And I think that you, that you will unfortunately, as, as with other things, I mean, twelve percent last year is a good, is a good start. But the problem is that twelve percent last year is pretty much the inflation rate for a lot of last year, right? Uh, so that really, that really doesn't get you ahead on, on the game, right? Uh, so you want to think about that going forward to, uh, I'm not suggesting that you jump, you know, right in uh with a significant tax uh improvement in one year, but you want to think about how you can stage that so it's affordable for your community. But you start to come back, come into, into a range that is more in line with your peer group. Uh, and put that aside, and I would suggest a dedicated reserve to fund your asset management uh so that you can reduce the cost of maintenance and reduce the cost, um, the risk of uh anything, anything significant happening to your assets, particularly those that provide essential life services.
I'd say we, it was a miracle, we had a zero percent uh tax uh not being paid property tax, everyone paid taxes. What kind of percentage would that cover in this town? Like if it's four hundred and something thousand down, or three hundred thousand down? So what would that do, like?
Well, I mean, if you, if, if you put that, if you took that money and put it in, into reserves, looking back at your um, reserve, historic reserve levels, um, so four hundred thousand, twenty twenty one, four hundred thousand was uh
Six point two.
Six point two percent, so that would put you back, uh, uh, put you all the way up at twelve point, or somewhere around twelve percent um, reserves, which would certainly help, and I mean, you know, four hundred thousand, that starts to be in the realm of being able to fix a roof or being able to continue providing services uh where, where something happens, uh, in the case, you know, buy a fire truck, uh, buy fire services. You know, and then looking at, you know, you know how much those things cost, right?
Six hundred grand.
You, you need to have something in place that has buying power, and frankly, twenty eight thousand dollars in reserves just does not have buying. But I suppose you could buy a small car for that, maybe.
It used, it used.
I used.
Well, I don't know, maybe this is simplified, but it seems like our main problem is not getting the tax dollars in. That's sinking us over the last.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it is a common. Yeah, I mean, I mean, it is a combination of taxes receivable and the tax level.
And possibly as well, a reserve policy, right? So what's guiding what you put into reserves every, every
Well, it's like most people, I think, not all people have savings accounts anymore. Just checking, and it's it's going in as fast as it's coming out.
I think part of the trend that we saw, that we we sort of highlighted as well, was a deficit position that you had every, at the end of every year. It looks like there were reserves that were being taken to fund that, right? So what a policy, what an adequate policy guide, you to say, you know what, that may not be the long term interest of our municipality to keep pulling from the reserves, you may have to take other decisions on the, at the budget level to decide we're not spending as we are collecting more resources.
Well, I'm under, I'm under the understanding that we don't really have a lot of optional spending. It's kind of all necessary spending in the town. Like, we don't have big projects that we're spending for fun. It's all just, it's salaries, like payroll, it's loan payments for equipment. So it's not like we have like a Santa Claus fund that we're dumping thousands of dollars into, eh? So I don't know what, how we can put anything into a reserve, really. Without charging the people that pay their taxes an extra twenty percent.
You're going to have to increase your your income to be able to do that.
We also have a community that doesn't have extra high earning power themselves.
Well, that's why, that's why I said, I'm not, I'm not suggesting you walk out tomorrow and say, oh, we're increasing taxes twenty five percent in reserves. I'm saying that you should increase it.
Use that number yet.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm not, no, I'm not. I'm saying, you want to look at what is affordable for your community, but recognize that, you know, there's been inflation for a number of years. There's been a number of years you haven't raised taxes. And you haven't met or and or you have not met inflation in the tax rate that you need to be raised. So you're now in a position of how do you catch up? I mean, you look at how much people, how much you're paying at the grocery store now compared to a year ago. Right? I mean, it's a reality that that's going to have to occur to some extent with property taxes as well, because you know, independent of staffing and everything else, gas, sand, water chem, everything else is going up, right? So you're going to have to come up with that, with those funds to deal with that. And I think you have a responsibility to plan for what happens if something bad happens to infrastructure that provides a state essential essential of life service, such as fire, water, wastewater, sewer, you know, that
Water plant getting totally knocked out by by lightning.
Yeah, I mean, you're not, I I'm not saying that you have to think about what happens if the plant totally fails. I mean, what happens if there's a roof failure? What happens if, you know, a major water, one of the main water pump right? I mean, you're going to have to be in a position to provide for that service to continue while you're doing an insurance claim, while you're doing a disaster claim, right? So you you want to be in a position to be responsible to your ratepayers to think, if that happens, we have to have some funds available to continue providing that service. And I don't think with the reserve levels where you are, you're clearly not going to be, you're clearly not going to do that in one year, right? You want to look at what becomes affordable. I I hesitate, obviously, to say palatable because I don't know a person who loves to pay taxes, right? You know, I can't, I I think that that would be the only person, someone that would be clearly locked up in society. But nonetheless, I think people will recognize these costs have increased over the past few years. And I think if you have to look at how you're going to stage it in so it becomes affordable and manageable for your community to move to a to a new standard that meets your needs to be responsible.
What if we just can't? What happens? What if we just can't? If the water plant goes that way?
Well, I mean, eventually you get into the problem of being liable for damage to people and property, right? If there's if there's a catastrophic failure of infrastructure. If ultimately the municipality ceases to be able to pay its accounts as it falls due, then you stand a risk, I suppose, of provincial oversight, in which case the province will decide what you do. And then, you know, that that's up to the minister to decide what would happen, which means
Have you been around many that haven't had that happen to them?
The last one I am aware that went was under supervision was the municipal shop. And if you want to talk to them about their experience, I would encourage you to do so.
That's why when we did our strategic planning this year, revenue generating, I use
At North, kind of north, west of Sudbury.
It is, have you, have you ever been up the highway one forty four? The watershed restaurant, there's the road across Sultan Road. It basically goes between one forty four and one twenty nine. The chapel is sort of more or less where that where that road, where the Sultan Road, just north of where the Sultan Road is.
Halfway between Timmins and Wawa.
Yeah, halfway between Timmins and Wawa, but below the highway eleven.
How many, how many years ago did this happen?
That was in the nineties.
And they're still existing. Oh, they still run out of their business now? Are they back on, are they back on track now? They're still supervised?
No.
That lasted for a few years?
Several years.
And what Kind of can't do.
Yeah, and what kind of, I don't know if you have much more information about it, what services? What happened, you know? I don't know anything about it, so I'm not sure.
I was not here at the time the decision was made, and I don't have sufficient background to speak to why they went under supervision.
Are there any other municipalities that are around our same situation now? All of them.
Well, my understanding is that you have the lowest percentage level of reserves in the province. You mean we won? We're first. I mean, we do have other municipalities that struggle with reserves or other indicators, absolutely.
Buying the fire truck hurts, that's for sure.
That's not even reflected in this.
No, I know, but
We're just finishing all the the accounting for last year, aren't we, Dale? Now, have the auditors finished? But when they, after the auditors finish, we're down the end of the line this year. How much longer before this report comes out? Because
The next year, the next
Like with the twenty twenty three stuff on it. Because it'd be nice to see that while we're making our final budget decisions. You won't have it till the next year.
The the difficulty that we have when producing these reports is that notwithstanding the legislated date of May thirty first, the majority of municipalities in the area have historically not filed their financial returns until late August or early September. Result that we can't run the analysis until October. You know, once we have those in and they've they've gone through our system and been identified as clean. By clean, that simply means that there's a process whereby the financial information return is compared to the audit and financial statement to ensure that the numbers correspond each other correctly.
Okay, so after the audit's done, then we can get a fair assessment for ourselves of of twenty, yeah, twenty twenty three.
Know from what your auditor is telling.
The changes with that big tax.
This document, the financial indicators and the financial profile will be available until October number in the year, simply because of the time delay in terms of when we receive a sufficient number of financial information returns to make the comparative percentages meaningful.
But what you you could do, I guess, in the interim, as we were discussing at the outset of the presentation, you could go into the FIR and look at it, you could create your own comparative analysis over the years of key indicators, like, you know, what are the actual dollar figure amounts for the reserves at this point? In twenty twenty, like, you could pull those figures together, or you could have staff, you know, do that on your behalf. So there, you know, you're not without access to that information that you submitted in your FIR. It's just the the actual percentages and calculations that we do when you come into
I really, you know, I'm really anxious to see what our big ten tax jump did last year. If it did anything, or just kept us above the the water line.
It still, it stung, it's still stung that tax increase, still stinging.
Yeah.
Are you prepared?
But I think with each of the indicators as well, when you look at the slides and you'll see that there are considerations for how how you might want to to move forward to address those things. And you may want to work with the staff to understand what's already been done potentially since last year. Maybe they've already recognized some of these trends. Maybe you, you know, you can attribute some early decisions, decisions from last year, from this table to to moving some of those pieces forward as well. So there's a bit of a guidepost there as well to help to start to address some of those pieces. They already have some pieces in the works.
We'd like to just inform council for the arrears that we saw in the very first one, fifty five point four percent of that number staff worked hard and it's down to probably fifteen percent of that number. That's just from the twenty twenty two number. So is that fifteen or it's down fifteen? No, it's down to about fifteen percent of that number. But now we're still looking into the twenty twenty three is still there. And be collecting to this year.
Well, there are no further questions. Again, I would like to thank the worship and members of council very much for allowing us this opportunity to address you. On the very last slide, you will find the contact information for myself or Sarah. We do try to answer questions as honestly and openly as possible. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. And as I say, to people, you know, there are no dumb questions. The only dumb question is the question you don't ask because you might make the wrong assumption. So please ask questions, please, please ask questions. How basic you might feel they are, that's perfectly fine. We're more than happy. A basic question often leads to a more in-depth discussion.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to point out that also on the back of your slide deck, there's the FIR website as well. You already have it all written down for you. The last page of your slide deck.
Pulled on the back.
Yeah, he was at the end of it.
Safe drive back to Sudbury.
It rained, I think.
Not snowing.
Yeah.
It was raining when I pulled in.
Thank you very much, Brian and Sarah, for coming and presenting that.
Sort of nice to see you again. We always go.
Okay, so we will move on to item five, adjournment, draft motion, be it resolved at special meeting, council be adjourned at seven oh four P M. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper and Counselor Wilcox, all in favor? Gary?